Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining us this evening. Welcome to the April 26, 2021 Alpharetta City Council meeting. And I'll note for the record, all members of council are present accounted for except for Councilman Merkel. I haven't heard from him, but if he joins us later, we'll note it on the record. Those of you that know, we start off with pledge of allegiance, and if you're able, please stand and join us in saying the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started this evening, I'll just note for record, we've got a little housekeeping to clean up the agenda for tonight. For those of you that were not aware, the first item that was published on the agenda is Z-20-05/CU-20-09/V-20-14 Alcoa Condominiums, 8292 Thompson Street. That item has been deferred by the applicant. It will not be heard tonight nor discussed this evening, and the applicant is asked to defer that until the June 28 city council meeting. I'll also note that I have another applicant for item CU-21-03 Enriched Events/4150 Old Milton Parkway. I'm told by our staff that this applicant would like to defer, so rather than make them sit through the zoning items ahead of them, if the applicant would like to come forward at this time.
Good evening. I'm Tia Carter. I'm the one half of Enriched Events, and we would like to request a deferment due to lack of communication from the landlord that has went silent.
Okay. And did you have a timeframe in mind?
I would like to request at least 30 days.
Staff, is that okay? Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
So that item will not be heard this evening either.
Mayor, apologize, point of order. You actually need a motion and a second on that because of the way-
To accept a deferral?
Yes, or because of the way the code is written because it was so late.
Okay. Thank you for pointing that out. It's the first time we've had an in-person deferral. So if council so would entertain, now's an opportunity for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer a motion to defer CU-21-03 Enriched Events/4150 Old Milton Parkway, defer for 30 days.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Richard and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell, and that was to approve deferring CU-21-03 Enriched Events, 4150 Old Milton Parkway for 30 days. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes, otherwise vote no. And it does pass unanimously. So now it is deferred. We'll go back to the consent agenda. Consent agenda was the first item on the published agenda, and that consists of the council meeting minutes from the meeting of April 19, 2021, and alcoholic beverage license application PH-21-AB-13 Alpha High Food LLC, DBA High, on Wimmer Parkway at 5530 Wimmer Parkway, Alpharetta, Georgia. Is there any council member who would like to remove anything from the agenda this evening? Seeing none, I'll call for a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Councilwoman Burnett and a second by Councilwoman Richard. Any discussion? All those in favor of the consent agenda, please vote yes, otherwise vote no. And it does pass unanimously. So now we'll move back to the public hearing for this evening. And the first item up on the agenda for public hearing is V-21-08 Blunt/12570 Hopewell Road Gravel Driveway Variance. Director Cook, I believe you have this item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The first item is shown to you on the screen, and the applicant is requesting consideration of a variance to allow a gravel driveway on a single-family detached lot. Property is located at 12570 Hopewell Road, on the west side of Hopewell Road and just north of North Trace. It's an exist- there's an existing house on the property that they plan to add to and modify, add a swimming pool as well as add on to the building. It's .84 acre property. It's zoned R15. It's developed with a one-story, little over 1,900 square foot home that you see on the screen. And the applicant is currently permitted. Here's a copy of the permitted changes to the elevation. A variance is requested from the Unified Development Code, Section 2.5.4, to allow a gravel driveway instead of a paved driveway. Four-cell dwellings require a paved driveway or paved parking service. They are requesting that that be allowed to be gravel. And I'll show you kind of, this is kind of the easiest plan to see, but they would still have the concrete drive at the entrance for 25 feet. And then you can see the dark area of the long driveway. That would be a gravel. And they submitted several different choices, which were part of the application. I'll put those up here that are shown as Exhibit A. And it's because, and it's because of the aesthetics, because of the, what they're, with the renovation to the house, they're going to choose a pea gravel color that's going to be close to the final color selection of the paint of the building. And here's the other exhibit. And we have had past variance requests to allow gravel driveways, including one at Boise. It was requested, however, they did end up paving. In addition, the city's downtown code allows gravel driveways in the downtown as an incentive for saving historic structures, and we allow that within the heritage district in parts of downtown. Property has an existing asphalt driveway which runs along the northern property line. I'll put that up here. So with the changes, they will still have the concrete driveway. We worry a lot about the entrance, of course, on a main road being paved, so they still will have the required 25-foot concrete apron at the front. We did look at the variance criteria, and the Unified Development Code, Article 4, Section 4.5.3 outlines criteria set forth for granting a variance. And specifically, we looked at number four. If relief, if granted, would not cause substantial detriment to the public good or impair the purpose and intent of the ordinance. And relief should not cause a substantial detriment to the public good. In fact, the applicant received several letters of support from adjacent and surrounding property owners that were included within the application. So staff reviewed the applicant's request, and we support the request for the gravel driveway. It's again because of the close proximity to other downtown gravel driveways. And the support submitted by the applicant says with the notification to everybody within 500 feet, they didn't receive any negative comments. So we are recommending approval of V-2108 Blunt/12570 Hopewell Road Gravel Driveway Variance, subject to two conditions. One, that the gravel driveway shall be permitted as depicted on the ENG permit stamped November 20, 2020. And the two, gravel and edging materials shall be substantially similar to the options that were submitted by the applicant as depicted in Exhibit A. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer those for you.
Do we have any questions from council? Councilman Binder?
Is this, I think it's a great idea. It's good to see. As far as maintenance and maintaining the look of it, I guess it would have to be replenished annually or every other year or so?
They do. They'll have, there'll be some maintenance, of course, because they have the edging that helps with the maintenance, and it also helps that they have the concrete apron, which keeps it from spilling out into the roadway.
But in order to make sure it's maintained, so if it's not, and neighbors or, that'd be something similar to grass being high or saying it's got to be maintained or, I just don't want it to, a future owner not maintaining it and it becomes a dirt driveway.
Sure. And with the layout of the driveway, because there's this small section that's actually visible from the roadway, we're not as concerned with that. And we're also not as concerned because of the depth of that apron, which will prevent it from getting onto the roadway, because we worry about safety. And that's, you know, one of the number one reasons why we don't allow gravel, because if it isn't maintained and it spills out onto the public road, it can be dangerous. So having that apron, we believe, will help with that. And then most of that driveway going to the back will be gravel, but they will still have some hard surface at the back where cars are regularly parked, so that part will be concrete also.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions from council at this time? Thank you, Ms. Cook. Would the applicant like to come forward?
We agree with this and we're excited about it, and we think it's looking great.
If you don't mind, please state your name and your address for the record.
Sorry, this is my first time. Can you tell?
That's quite all right.
Andrea Blunt, and yeah, that's it. 12570 Hopewell Road. Y'all should drive by it. It's looking great already.
Do we have any questions for the applicant?
I have a comment. I rode by last week, and I've always thought that was a beautiful little cottage home, but now it's just a beautiful home, what you all have done to it. And I think gravel's a perfect solution for that. It fits right in that English kind of style, so good luck with it, and thanks for improving the area there.
Thank you, thank you. It's been fun. We're keeping a lot of the stuff that was near original to 1940. Yeah. We're excited about it. Thank you. Awesome.
Any other questions or comments from council? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Cobb, do we have any public comment cards on this item?
We do not, sir.
But if there's anyone that would like to come forward and speak on the gravel driveway on Hopewell Road, now's your opportunity. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'll offer a motion to approve V-21-08 Blunt/1250 Hopewell Road Gravel Driveway Variance, subject to the conditions as reviewed by Ms. Cook.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Richard and a second by Councilman Binder, and that was to approve V-21-08 Blunt/12570 Hopewell Road Gravel Driveway Variance. Any discussion from council? All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes, otherwise vote accordingly. And it does pass unanimously. So we'll move on to the only other item we'll be hearing this evening in the public hearing, and that will be PH-21-06 Kairos Thompson Street Flats Change to Condition of Zoning. Mr. Woodman, you have the floor.
The item before you this evening is a change to previous conditions of zoning on a 2.4 acre property in the downtown to approve for 24 condominium units, and the project is referred to as the Thompson Street Flats. The requested change would allow for 12 condominium units to be replaced with 10 single-family detached homes. 12 condo units have already been constructed on the east side of the property, which, and that also represents phase one of that development. The density would be reduced from 10 dwelling units per acre to 9.2 dwelling units per acre. And I do have the location map on the overhead. The location, the subject property is located at 51 and 61 Thompson Street, near the southeast corner of Thompson and Haynes Bridge. The west side of the property is approximately one acre. This is the undeveloped portion of the property. It's, represents phase two of this development. Surrounding properties are zoned downtown live work to the east and south, and C2 general commercial to the west, and mixed use to the north. Phase one of the development is located to the east. An undeveloped property approved for the Kairos Old Milton Office Buildings, or One Alpharetta, is located to the south. And then an undeveloped commercial property is located to the west, and of course Boise located to the north. The comprehensive land use plan designation of this property is mixed use live work. There's a couple of plans from the staff report and a table. The property was rezoned in 2015 to allow for a total of 24 condominium units, and that was in four buildings, so each building having six units apiece. As I mentioned before, that density was 10 dwelling units per acre. In 2016, Kairos Development brought forward a change to previous conditions of zoning, so a change to that 2015 rezoning of the property, to reconfigure the site plan and to change the architecture. The, I'm going to keep this to the side, but bring up their site plan. Actually, let's keep this on the overhead. So the approved site plan, which is this, this site plan here, so this is the current approved site plan for the property, depicts four condo buildings oriented to Thompson Street. There is a rear amenity area and tree save area on the property. And this is phase one, the eastern portion of the property, so this is the side of the property that has been developed, and this is the other, the west side of the property is undeveloped. The applicant is now proposing, instead of the two condo buildings with 12 units, they are now proposing 10 single-family detached homes. This is the applicant's current site plan here, the lower site plan. As you see on the site plan, half the homes are oriented to Thompson Street, and the other half are oriented to the rear tree save area and an amenity area. The existing, with the existing grade of the property, the homes facing Thompson Street would be three stories as measured on Thompson Street, and the homes facing the rear amenity area would be a two-story. And this is from this view, so along this sidewalk, those homes would be two stories over basement with a garage. The maximum height of the homes is 40 feet, so the original condo development was approved for height variance to increase the height up to 48 feet, but the homes would not utilize that, that height variance. They would meet the maximum 40 feet. Homes, of the 10 homes proposed, they're approximately 3,000 square feet apiece. They all have a rear-loaded garage access from a new private alley, so they would use the existing driveway off Thompson Street, and they would be accessed from this alley. Each home has a garage and a driveway that will accommodate two side-by-side parking spaces for a total of four parking spaces per home. There are an additional five on-street parking spaces with the Thompson Street streetscape As I mentioned, the approved plan had, I'll go to the open space exhibit. So this is the current approved plan with the two, with the four condo buildings, and this is the proposed plan with the 10 detached homes. The green area on this plan represents amenity space, and the yellow represents civic space, civic space being open to the public with amenity space being for the residents of this development. The approved plan, which is the upper plan, I'm sorry, which is the lower plan, had the .7 acre tree save area and rear amenity area. That area's shrunk slightly. As we've noted in the table, the open space has changed from about 65.7% of the site down to 60.4% of the site, so there has been a change in the overall open space. You can also tell there's a 30-foot linear park along the frontage of the original approved plan, and with the change to the 10 detached homes, that linear park on the western portion of the property is slightly smaller, so there's a change also there to the open space resulting from that change. These are the elevations of the homes. These are the three-story homes, so these are the elevations that would be facing Thompson Street. And then below that is the two-story elevation that would be facing the rear amenity area, tree save area. The applicant submitted a description of the architecture and as described by their architect, the styles would vary between Tudor Eclectic, Stick and Shingle style, with a modern interpretation similar to Boise. Boise, just, just to note, Boise was approved prior to the Alpharetta Downtown Code being approved, and therefore, at the time that Boise was approved, we did not have the approved architectural styles in the code. Materials and details applicable to each of the styles will be provided on all sides of the home. We have that within the conditions if approved. In addition, each home will have, this is from the applicant, each home will have a unique garden wall with gate, chimney, and wood shingle roof complementing that particular architectural style. The city's downtown consultant did review the elevations and believes that they are generally consistent with the architectural styles approved in the downtown. This item was shown to the public on March 10 at the community zoning information meeting. There were several questions about the location of construction, of the construction driveway, completion of punch list items at the existing condo buildings, parking, how the HOA will be split between the condo buildings and the homes, and property maintenance responsibilities. And staff has reviewed the applicant's proposal and finds that it can support the request to change previous conditions of zoning. The proposal would result in a reduction of density, reducing from 10 to 9.2, and the single-family detached product is desirable in the downtown. And with that, staff is recommending approval, subject to the following conditions. And the first set of conditions would be the modified 2016 conditions. I'll just read the ones that are being proposed for modification. So condition two, we're adding in clarification that the 2016 site plan dates are for, represent phase one of the project, and that phase two is referenced as the site plan prepared by Paradigm dated April 12, 2021. Condition number three clarifies the building elevations, that the building elevation architectural requirements and material requirements are specific to the condominium buildings in phase one. We have a separate condition to deal with phase two and the new conditions. Condition number 11 was a wholesale change of that condition. There were specific, two specific, two specific tree save requirements within that previous condition, and there were five additional trees that the developer was asked to make reasonable efforts to save. And so we've just completely, what we did is we just rewrote that condition. The applicant was asking for the elimination of a required tree save of a pecan tree that was along the frontage of Thompson Street. I can show you that briefly on the site plan. That pecan tree is generally in this location and impacts these two lots. Condition number 16 is clarifying the requirements and the improvements within the rear amenity area. The rear amenity area, while the trees have been saved in that area or protected in that area with, in with regard to phase one of the development, the walking trail and, walking trail dog walk and seating area have never, have not been approved within that area as of yet. Condition number 17 specifies that the building height variance was specific to the condominium buildings, does not apply to the single-family homes. And then the new conditions. Condition number one, specific to the building elevations of the homes shall be substantially similar to the renderings prepared by Main Street Design dated March 8, 21, 2021, with final approval by DRB. Each home shall have a unique elevation, and each shall have a garden wall with gate, chimney, and wood shingle roof complementing the architectural style. Condition two, stoops, porches, courtyard shall not be permitted within the 10-foot setback depicted along Thompson Street. Three, there shall be no on-street parking on the minimum 20-foot aisle, and the surface shall hold 75,000 pounds to support a fire truck. Condition four, a land disturbance permit shall not, shall, shall not be issued for phase two until the developer has completed all phase one site completion list items in Exhibit A. And I do have a copy of Exhibit A. And Exhibit A was included in your package. I will note that there was one item that was left off the list by mistake, and I've added that here this evening. There was one item that was added, install missing seating in the linear park. So that's the linear park along Thompson Street. There's clearly seating that was shown on the approved site plan that is not, has not been installed. Just to complete that sentence after Exhibit A, which includes but is not limited to improvements to the rear amenity area, stairs to access area, walking path, seating areas, landscaping, general cleanup, et cetera. Condition five, garbage pickup shall be from the alley, not Thompson Street. We have reached out to Republic, and they have confirmed that garbage pickup via the alley is, it would be possible at that location. Condition six, no more than 10% of the residential unit shall be permitted to be rented, as recorded in the HOA's declaration and covenants. In condition seven, previous conditions of zoning related to file PH-16-15 Thompson Street Flats/Kairos Development shall remain in effect, except as noted in the modified and new conditions above. And that concludes the staff presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you, Mr. Woodman. I've got just a clarification.
Sure.
On condition number five, the garbage pickup, and you mentioned that you had contacted our current vendor. Have we made any attempt to make sure that, since we're going through a request for proposal process, that other vendors that may end up with our contract in a few months would still be able to service these? I know we had a similar issue with another development not too long ago, and I just want to make sure that we're not making assumptions, so.
Understood. I'm not sure the, I've not been involved in the actual change, potential change there. I'm not sure if there is any other staff available this evening to answer that question.
Maybe not. I just thought I'd ask to see if y'all had considered it.
I'm not sure.
So you may want to reach out.
I would definitely.
I know Director Harris isn't here, but we can ask him tomorrow.
All right.
Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Michael, it was either the point right previous to when you started going through the conditions or the subsequent point before. You read through a list of concerns that had been raised at planning commission. Can you detail those again for me?
Sure. Give me one second.
It's easy, I am. I apologize.
Yes, so some of the concerns- Yes, so some of the concerns that were brought up is the location of the construction driveway. So during development of phase two, the residents in phase one wanted to know where construction vehicles would be accessing the property. And my recollection is that the developer responded that there would be a separate driveway from the existing driveway. So to separate that construction traffic from the residents. There were also questions about completion of punch list items at the existing condominium buildings. I believe that those items represented both site completion in phase one as well as typical punch list items between a owner and a developer.
I have a question for that. It may be the same question or a Michael question. Can that be a condition of zoning for a separate application or is that not to be considered? I'm not proposing anything. I'm trying to make sure I'm not going to say something illegal.
We can do, we can certainly, it certainly is the condition is proposed as far as completing the site work for phase one. Yes, that can, that's a condition. As far as other things that may be punch list items, we really, that, you know, that's more of a civil matter between the.
Understood. That was where my question lies. So you clarified that. Thank you. That cannot be considered. Thank you.
Councilmember Binder.
Think whenever we see these applications, it's kind of a good time to review the area and see what, what we could not imagine. With that, and I've seen it just around Alpharetta in general, even in the Crab Apple area where I'm, where I'm at, FedEx, delivery trucks, they just kind of stop now in the middle of the street and go across the street and just keep the car there. Is that, is that happening on Thompson Street too?
I don't know. I mean, I, from walking Thompson Street myself, and I occasionally will walk down the street there, I definitely see construction vehicles stopping in the travel lane. I'm not sure about delivery vehicles. I suspect that it's happening. I see it on other streets downtown.
Yeah. And maybe, maybe that's something just to check in general, I don't know, with our police or if we're hearing anything. Because I hate to hear that we're having 911 calls because the FedEx, I keep saying that, the delivery trucks or somebody else. And FedEx is great, by the way. But, so would like to check in on that. And that, that kind of brings me to the concern on here is, and I know we're kind of going away from using hammerheads or being more stringent on having ability to turn around. So that's okay for our police vehicles and maybe fire vehicles, but liability, again, maybe for delivery drivers or anybody using that and saying, ah, I'm going to park on the street because it's too hard to back up. Is that, has that been given any thought on there?
I will be honest, we haven't looked at, you know, delivery, typical, typical delivery vehicles making turnarounds within the subdivisions. But we can certainly look at that, though.
Okay. It's just kind of an issue based on our success of a growing city that we just haven't, it's becoming, you see it every once in a while and now you see it more often and like you'll be driving and all of a sudden you have to stop because you didn't realize the car was, you know, stopped because there, there's no driver in there.
Yeah.
So, all right, appreciate it.
Yep.
Councilman Hypes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Michael, first of all, the second row of houses, the fronts of the houses are basically facing away. I recall an application further down Thompson Street about, within the last six months. I believe it was more or less a cul-de-sac type proposed development. I also recall something about, was the front of the house where the garage faces toward the street? Or was the front of the house facing away going the opposite direction? And we have restrictions on front-facing garages. How do you square the second row of houses versus what was that issue in that particular application?
So I believe in that application, they were actually, they were not, the front of the house faced their street. And so they had a front-facing garage. So they, that was an actual variance request.
Right.
In this particular application, if, as long as, they would be meeting the code as long as these were, these homes were oriented so that these were the front of the home.
So it's basically calling it the front of the home makes it the front of the home.
Well, it has to be, I mean, by being the front of the home, it has to have a typical front door access. But we do have, I mean, we do occasionally will have that where we'll have units not necessarily fronting on a road, but they might be fronting on open space.
What will the front of those second row homes face? What is to the south side of that property line?
So this is, this, the property to the south is also under the common ownership of Karos Development. This is that one Alpharetta City office development. So there would be, these homes would be facing an amenity area. So there's a tree save area through here that will be improved with a walking trail. And then the one Alpharetta City development had office development with a parking deck behind it. So the parking deck would be closest to these homes. There was a requirement on the one City Alpharetta development that a 50-foot undisturbed buffer be maintained here. So there would still be additional open space before the parking deck.
To pull all that together, the second row of houses, the fronts of those houses will face a parking deck.
It would be facing, yes, in the future. That's what's approved on that, that property.
There were some questions about access for construction. Is it possible to include a condition where all staging for construction will take place on the property? There's a house very close to City Hall that routinely takes up one to five spaces in the left turn lane. They're building that house with no staging area. And my concern here is the people who want to use Thompson Street unobstructed and that not be a staging area. And my concern is also for the persons who bought into phase one of this development and that it not be a staging area, if that's their desire, that it not be a staging area. I think they've made a substantial purchase based on representations of what this project may look like. And so it's of a great concern to me in a very tightly fit, two rows of houses, private alley, that whatever gets built here, that, you know, the building permit and everything else is tied to, you got to have your construction vehicles off the roads and out of everybody else's common area.
Okay.
Rest of council may not agree with that. That's just something I'm seeing if, you know, if staff would be open to that. There was a discussion about at the CZIM of HOA and shared drive, and I may ask the applicant about this, but is it your understanding, staff's understanding that the shared drive will still remain with the HOA of the condo flats?
I don't know that that was really, was clarified during CZIM. I believe there's also an underground detention facility within that main drive that provides access to both the condos and the proposed homes. So I don't know exactly how that gets split. The applicant would probably be better to ask that question.
Okay. And can you elaborate on the loss of amenity space? Again, I'm, I'm concerned about Thompson Street. I'm concerned about people who bought into a development that was marketed and is still to this moment being marketed as 24 condo town, condos on the applicant's website. And if there's an expectation of amenity space for those persons who bought into this development, what is being lost?
It's approximately 5,000 square feet of amenity space less on this overall site plan than the original site plan. That is just amenity space, the green area.
Right. And is there any way to make up that lost amenity space for the benefit of the existing phase one owners?
With additional area, I'm not sure that there, that there is, although we do, amenity space doesn't just have to be on the ground. But I would assume there's potential to make that up with improvements to the amenity area. But I don't know how the applicant could provide additional amenity space without losing a lot.
Thank you.
Councilmember Burnett?
Yeah, and I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor. Not to follow up, but perhaps take another look at Councilmember Hypes's question with respect to amenity space. If you go to condition 11, can you pull back up the tree save areas? And go through those specific trees?
This might be a better way to show the tree saves. So in the original condition number 11, there was a specific requirement for a pecan tree, which is this tree right here.
What number is that?
That is tree. Are you talking about the tree number?
Correct.
It's a 23-inch pecan.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. This is the 23-inch pecan right here. So the applicant has, is asking for this tree to be removed from the condition. That's part of the request. There was one additional tree that was required to be saved from the previous 2016 conditions into 24-inch black walnut. That's back in the amenity area. They are not asking for a change to that and they are agreeing to save that tree. In addition, on the original condition number 11, the applicant was asked to make every effort to incorporate seven additional specimen trees. And those trees were in the rear amenity area as well as both in phase one and phase two. And of those seven, the applicant was able to save five. And they're asking for two of those trees to be removed. It's a 28-inch water oak. It's tree number 363. And a 48-inch water oak, tree number 365. That, that larger water oak, 365, is represented by this critical root zone right here. You can see. It's this tree right here.
What, one more, it's the, if you're looking at the screen, it is the bottom right, I believe that would be house number 10, correct?
This is house 10, yes. Lot 10, yep.
Is that all your questions?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Just clarifying. Before I move on, Mayor Proton Mitchell, I believe you had a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Michael, what is the reason that we're moving away from the two additional condominium units to 10 single-family homes?
I think that the applicant would probably be better to answer that question. I'm not sure, you know, I think that the applicant, I know, had possibly mentioned during the CZIM that there were some issues selling the condominiums in the first phase. So they were adjusting and going for the detached homes, but I don't want to put words into their mouth.
I can ask the applicant. Under new conditions, number one, this is a new one on me. Do you ever recall, since we've had our design guidelines for our historic downtown core, that we've permitted anything with modern emphasis or a modern interpretation?
Not that I recall, unless it's been part of a variance request to vary from the architectural styles.
Because these don't resemble Tudor to me, stick or, or shingle. I know they're getting shingles on the roof and that will be lovely. But this looks more like something you'd see out at Encore or at the mall or, or one of those areas where we have no design guidelines. But, but I'm surprised that we have put a condition in there that these homes would be substantially similar when they don't comply with our downtown design guidelines.
Understood.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for the Councilwoman Richard?
Thank you, Mayor. To follow up on the design discussions, the elevations, Michael, did our downtown architect consultant review these elevations?
Yes.
And he supported what's being presented here?
Yes. The response, I believe, was that they're generally compliant with the downtown architectural styles.
Okay. A couple of questions on this. We talked about amenity space and what's being impacted there. Can you bring up the site plan? And I'm interested in the civic space reduction along Thompson Street. I know you said it's slightly smaller, but we've got a 30-foot linear park existing where the two condo buildings are, correct?
Correct.
And what, what is the size of the reduced civic space there?
Sorry, the writing is very small on here.
Yeah, I know. That's why I'm asking you. I can't read it either.
Okay, so it's, it's been reduced. There's the current site plan before you this evening. There's been a reduction of 2,000 square feet of civic space resulting in the change from this to this.
Got it, 2,000 square feet. And then the pecan that we've been talking about, the tree that impacts units three and four. Am I correct in understanding that's also a specimen tree?
It is.
It is a specimen tree? Okay. And I remember during the CZIM meeting, the applicant referencing the fact that the reason for taking that tree out was to provide the on-street parking. But it clearly is impacting the units in the front as well, right?
Correct, yeah.
My other question is, in the application, I did see that the applicant reached out to, or identified that they had spoken with the Boise HOA and they were in support of the change in conditions. But I didn't see anything referencing support from the existing residents in the condo buildings. Did I miss that or?
I don't recall getting any letters of support from residents in the existing condo buildings. I do recall this letter of support from Boise, but I don't recall any from existing condo.
And then my last question is, the undeveloped property to the west of this, is that under common ownership?
I, I thought that it was, or I thought that the, that Karos Development was interested in the property at one point. I can't recall if they physically purchased the property or not.
Okay, we can ask.
Yeah.
I'll ask them. Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other questions for staff at this point? Thank you, Michael.
You're welcome.
Very thorough report. I appreciate your efforts on that. If the applicant would like to come forward at this time, now's your opportunity.
I am Art Roundtree, 7114 Surrey Point, Alpharetta, Georgia. I'm with Kairos Development. We are a local, small business developer. And thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council people, for hearing our, our change. I'm going to roll off just on some of the questions that were asked and then we can get into, I don't, I don't think the trash service is going to be a problem switching that over, just talking to some other vendors that will get in there. So that's kind of an easy one. I would say, you know, why are we pivoting from doing the multi-family to single-family? It's a great question. You know, I can tell you it's just desirable. In downtown, I've talked with a lot of people, and they're like, man, just do single-family there, Art. You'll kill it. And I'm like, you know, I'm just being honest with you. It's a struggle building the multifamily. It's hard for the lay-down that you were talking about. You know, you'll just have to be in the driveway to do that. I mean, there's, or you're going to be, you know, it's just, it's a tough challenge there. I think single-family is a lot easier. It's faster. And I think it'd be profitable. I mean, these are expensive homes, well-done materials. If we've got a problem with the exterior of that, I'm more than welcome to revisit that. And we can bring Lou Oliver back in or whoever to get it the way we want it to look. We are all about that. The work that has to be done, I appreciate you bringing that up, you know, some of the site conditions and some of the things, putting it on there. I'm responsible for those. I'm here, we're going to hear from people. I want them to be heard, and I want to do those things. And I'll just tell you, we have our last homeowner contract at Thompson Street Flats. They are absolutely gorgeous, knocked-down, beautiful homes. Are there some problems here and there, like every home in America? Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. But I'm here to take care of them. And I've done this for 30 years. It's been a challenge with what we've gone through family-wise and what we've, you know, just experienced with COVID. I mean, it's, you know, it's been a challenge. That's one of the reasons we're pivoting, you know, to the single-family. So to address, I think, the well, that's it, unless you've got some questions. How about that?
Councilwoman Richard?
I'll rattle on.
Mr. Roundtree, can you answer the question about the property to the west?
I can. That's what I was going to talk to you about, the personal family. We owned the rear. Jack and I are my business partner here, and we were able, and we were blessed to be able to pick up that piece last year, and we worked to get it under contract. It was an expensive purchase, and right now, we have an option of first refusal, I think is the best way to say that. And with the family, so we have
Can I say something?
Yeah.
If you don't mind.
My name is Jack Williams. I live at 4935 Stablegate Court in Coming. And my mom and dad bought that land for us, and so they own it. I have a pretty good relationship with them. I'm 57 years old, so I've been around them a while. And we are looking at how to best develop this. And the world's just different today. COVID has, you know, we had planned on doing office buildings and some residential and retail. And we were working with a fantastic developer here in the city of Atlanta, and it just blew up. And so that's where we are. My mom and dad own it. They're pretty good friends of mine, and they really just want to get rid of it back to us. So, but in the meantime, they had a 1031 tax-free exchange they needed to facilitate. And we didn't really ever think we were going to get it, quite frankly. We worked on it for years. And all of a sudden, we get a call from China that says, hey, we want to sell this, and you've got 60 days. And so that's how it all transacted, and that's where we are with it. I'm really excited about it, and I'd like to do an office building there. I think it would be a good fit for the downtown district. And I can appreciate your architectural concerns. We kind of got to this step, and now Lou's going to step in. We'll fix all that kind of stuff. We've got design review we're all going to have to go through. We've got a lot of things that we've got to do. That last home closing, everybody knows in the home-building business that all the money's in the last home. And we're going to take care of these people. We're not going anywhere, and we're going to do the best we can to solve all the issues that we can. That I can promise you. We've done it for 30 years. Tough right now, but we will fix it, and we are not running from nobody. Not any people, nobody, anywhere in this room. And that's and he's a good man.
Any questions?
Thank you, I'm done.
Any other questions from council? Councilmember Burnett?
Hey, Art, good to see you.
Good to see you.
On the white, the 48-inch I'm supposed to ask you a question, you're supposed to answer, but I'm just going to ask you
Sure.
sort of a question. Talk to me about the strategy of moving away from the amenity space in the master plan to what you are proposing today. And
In my view, so the civic space is smaller to a degree, but it's still a great feel on Thompson. The amenity space, we're still providing all the paths. What's really cool are those doors get to open up to it. And I know it's not going to be looking at a parking deck, but, you know, sure, could you see through the trees and some things like that? You know, the way we're positioning that, I think, is going to be good. It's in-town living. You know, we're pretty, you know, I grew up in Atlanta, and most everything, this is the first thing we've ever built in Alpharetta, but we're used to the infill housing, and it's the amenity space is pretty much the same. The paths are going in. We're currently working with the city on demoing all the houses that are around the properties, all the sheds. Those are in for permit. We've had civil engineers, and we've had, actually, David came out today to walk the limb clearing to get the houses out. You know, what not to disturb, where not to put equipment. And those revisions have been going back and forth. I've signed the contract for the demolition of all those houses, and it's funded, and it's it's just, you know, in the process, it just, you've got to go through the city and do, you know, you've got to have a construction in and out. And so that's going. I wish it was quicker than everybody thinks it is, but it's, we're doing it properly. So we hope to get that as, you know, as a good faith for you guys cleaned up, keeping the grass cut. That answer your question?
Councilman You pointed it behind you. Are you asking? Councilman Hypes.
Good evening, Art. I had some questions for Mr. Woodman, same questions for you. Are you going to be able to stage all construction within the phase of the development and not on Thompson Street and not on existing Phase 1?
With this new development?
Well, yes, sir.
With the 10 that's on the table?
Yeah, the one that you're here
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I'm able to, we're able to pull in the construction entrance off of Thompson on the west end, and we're going to work, start with the houses closest to Thompson Street Flats and work our way down. And I've talked to some of the homeowners over there about that, you know, keeping no subs, you know, no lay-down material, you know, keeping it keeping it off of that. That's a great question, and I've talked about hours of operation. They'll be, you know, typical with the city, you know, not in the early mornings and Saturday stuff.
Well, the best conditions on applications are the ones where the applicant and staff agree. Do you agree to a condition on this application for staging of all construction on the property? And in the reverse, not on Thompson Street and not on Phase 1?
I think I can do that. Yeah, I don't see why I couldn't.
Occasionally, a sub may park on Thompson Street, but we'll ask them
Police it and put signs up and move it.
And do everything we can. So just to say that, you know, it just, sometimes in construction, stuff happens.
But they're not going to be using the common area driveway. There was some conversation about the driveway underneath it. The detention's already in place on the site. The sewer tap's been made. It's more than ample to receive 10 additional homes, the stormwater. How that'd be maintained, it'd be a share-cost agreement. There's an easement with, we have with the driveway right now.
I appreciate the candor. Don't take my response as something that I'm acquiescing to. I've made a living off the word occasionally. And what I'm trying to find out is if we haven't agreed upon conditions.
I agree with that.
I can agree to it.
Yeah, we can do it. We just, you know, we'll have to monitor it, and sometimes somebody may park somewhere that we're not excited about. I know when they were building Voisey, they parked all over our property. It just happens. That being said, we're not going to use the common driveway. We'll make sure that we monitor it and manage it and be, you know, vigilant about being responsible for that stuff.
Next question is, as originally envisioned, Phase 1 and what's now Phase 2 were going to have identical condominium buildings. Is that correct?
What's designed now?
What was originally planned?
Yes.
And as part of selling the units in Phase 1, you were selling the amenity space for both of those buildings, both the existing building and the building that had been planned to be built. Is that correct?
And the amenity being the dog walk to be shared?
I'm talking about the amenity space that's referenced in the packet.
Yeah. I don't, the green space stays the same. I think the ordinance with Alpharetta is everybody gets to use that. Isn't that right?
So I'm looking, in my packet, it's on page 63 of the PDF. I don't know if it's possible to even get that up on the screen, James. But it shows from a before and after what appears to be a loss of 15,000 square feet of amenity space, amenity open space. Phase 1 had 34,000. Phase 2 would have been identical to Phase 1, but now the revised Phase 2 shows 19,000 square feet of amenity space. And James, I don't know if you can open up the box that's in the upper-right corner and expand that or not, but be that as it may, this is your application, and there you go. So if the identical building were built in Phase 2, there'd be 34,000 square feet of amenity open space available to all condo owners additional. But with Phase 2, it's going to be 19,000. So my question is, what's being done to address the loss of 15,000 square feet of amenity space for the existing owners?
Well, the gross area of the lot's slightly different. Does that affect the math?
I'm just
I think it does.
I'm only using the numbers in front of me.
I'm looking at 1.335 acres of Phase 1, and I'm looking at 1.051, all together being 2.4. So you would have to do the math of both green spaces. I think to get to the question, there's a reduction, I believe, of 7%? If that's what you're asking. And, but if you go back, if we could slide that back over and see how the layout works, the steps are actually cooler. They really work well. I think all homeowners will be happy with getting up there off of the driveway, and it just ties, you know, ties it all in. So if you look at the bottom, the original, it's really the same concept. It's just a, it was a little, it's less steep where we're putting the steps now to walk up than this other side. I mean, it's not that much, but it's, but you still get to walk away, and I think it's a pleasant amenity space. Above and beyond, you know, a lot of stuff I'm seeing.
Well, I'll take your point that there is slightly less acreage for Phase 2, and so that's a good point, although I don't think it zeros out. So a related question is, is there going to be a separate HOA?
Yes.
And will the amenity space in Phase 1 be part of Phase 2? I mean, are they going to be equally available but not subject to having to maintain it?
It's a good question.
Yeah, and I can answer a little bit to that. We, the HOA has an attorney that's involved, and our attorney's working with him. I've met with everybody, and we've talked about it, so I think, quite frankly, it's going to be a cross-easement situation where everybody shares in it. But I think the fair thing to do, and I'm open to discuss this with the, obviously, the Thompson Street Flats folks, is to have some sort of separate but equal access, and we've done it before. We built, you know, three buildings in Atlanta that were all cross-covered, cross-easements, shared amenities. And so we really understand that world. But I really would like to make sure that we have the HOA's insight as we develop that document in its final form. And I know they've hired an attorney that we, you know, he's very astute, very capable. And our attorney has been with us for 30 years, and they're both working on those questions. And so I think at the end of the day, our goal is to be good neighbors. I mean, that's just what we're trying to do, is to be good neighbors to each other, not create conflict with the common drive. We want to make sure that's sort of a, you know, equal protection for all. We've been doing it that way for 30 years, and we will continue to do that. So that's where we are with it.
I have a question, though, for staff, because I don't know the answer. It was my understanding the whole time that in the ordinance of downtown no, just that amenity was always open to everybody, that we couldn't fence that in and exclude it from the public. I know there's civic space, but, so you're saying that is private amenity space for
Mr. Woodman, do you mind addressing that?
We always saw it as public space, to be honest with you.
The area in yellow is the required civic space for this development. The civic space is open to the public. The green area is, represents the required amenity space. That would only have to be open to the residents of the condominium buildings.
Okay. That's new to me.
Thank you, Mr. Woodman.
Thank you.
Councilmember Burnett?
Hey, guys. Are you open to going back? I have a question with your shared services across HOAs, and I would gather that there are probably people who will speak later that may also have some of the same questions. Do you have concern about that? I know that you think that it would work, but it could be, I think fences make good neighbors. And I think that it's worth considering.
Okay.
Councilwoman Richard?
Thank you. Mr. Roundtree, I think you were on the community zoning meeting
Yes.
that was in early March. And I recall a fair number of existing residents in the condo building asking a number of questions about how the HOA was going to be structured and who was, how the responsibility for the shared infrastructure, the underground attention and other things were going to be managed. So it sounds like between early March and late April, you have not had any formalized discussions and reached any agreements with the residents in the condo buildings about such an important question?
Well, the easement's in place.
Yeah, but the question was
No, ma'am, I have not.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I understood that there had been no further discussion since that particular meeting, the CZIM.
So both council have been in contact with each other, and it is in progress. So it's not, you know, once, and Councilman Hypes, you'll appreciate this, is once attorneys get involved, you kind of have to follow protocol, and that's where it is. Neil is working with Stephen, and we're going to solve all those issues, and it's in progress. And we will very much take into consideration the concerns of our homeowners on Thompson Street Flats. They'll be fully engaged in the discussion, and will continue to have those discussions. We've done these type of agreements for, we've always been placemakers and, you know, mixed mixed use and it's just not foreign to us. It's very, we're very comfortable with it. We're going to share, this Phase Two will share in the cost of the operations of the Phase One's detention and common drive. I don't think it's wise to have landscaping combined, just because, you know, just operational issues of single family versus a condo building are totally different. I mean, there's parking deck service, there's different kinds of maintenance that needs to be done with a single family home. You know, you have your own individual roof in a condo.
And I understand. I, I know what the differences are. I just wanted to make, I just wanted to clarify that there hadn't been any further discussion since early March.
There has.
Okay. Thank you.
Have any other questions from council?
I've got a couple of things, and I don't know that so much as, I'm a salesperson by nature, and when I'm talking to salespeople, I generally throw out my objections, see how you can address them. So I've got two main concerns. One is, we approved this plan in its entirety. And I understand that you intend to work with the people who've already bought your product, but there are residents who have bought property and it's not cheap property in the city of Alpharetta. And they did that with the expectation of this project as in its entirety. Okay? So that's a concern and an objection that, that I'm struggling with right here is that I understand the economics, I understand your motivation, and I can see there might be some ways that it makes sense for everybody, but I've got a real problem with telling these people who are not supportive yet of your project, of throwing them into this legal and, and this turmoil. Okay? So if, if you want to address that, feel free at this point.
Everything you just said is well-founded. I, I can't contest it, to be honest, Mr. Mayor. There's going to be challenges in a phased project such as this. And we switched gears for economic reasons and construction cost reasons. And all of those are valid reasons from a, you know, one of the things we always say is, you know, if you're losing money, you don't get a bigger truck, right? You kind of have to switch. And Vozy has been sort of the, I guess, the compass to some extent. Super attractive product. And it does, it did extremely well. And it moved really fast. We've been at this condo building now for over three, three years. And we're down to our last one. Ooh, ooh. And a lot of things will get solved with that last one closing. And, you know, we certainly learned a lot. We got hit during the process by terrible weather, very, you know, difficult labor, you know, supply, material rises, all the other things. And we just don't want to build another one. But we think it's iconic. I love the building.
I get all that, but I mean, you've already explained all that. So I was just...
Sure. I don't disagree with what you have to say at all.
Okay, so...
It makes sense.
The other one, and I really do have a, a problem with some of the other issues that council have cited, but I also have a concern about the change on the streetscape at the front.
Mm-hmm.
And if you'll follow me around, I, I'm going to ask a couple of questions here to help me try to think all this through. Y'all own the property on Old Milton behind both of these phases, correct?
On and on.
Okay. So your family owns that prop. And on the roundabout?
Mm-hmm.
So either you two as investors or your family have access to that entire stretch from Thompson Street all the way to Old Milton, all the way to Haynesbridge Road?
Yes, sir.
I think if you were coming with something more comprehensive with the support of the owners in town on Thompson Street Flats, I think you've got an opportunity to bring forward a project that would really persuade me. But what I'm hearing, it's challenging at this point. Have you given that any thought?
Mr. Mayor, that would be my first choice, to be honest with you. We've talked about it a lot. But the nature of the economic world we live in today right now says, let's do these 10 houses and then go with a master plan for the overall whole site. We personally would like to see some kind of neighborhood retail office on the Old Milton and Haynesbridge corner. We think that corner is sort of iconic in a sense that it's kind of a main gateway to downtown Alpharetta City. It's why we call it One Alpharetta City. But in the meantime, we have this 12-unit condo building that we could do, or we could come see you guys and see if we could do 10 units of single family. And, you know, when you go do the market studies, the single family in Alpharetta is just fantastic. I mean, it's, I mean, every time I drive around, it's just amazing at how well it performs, how simpler it is to build, you know, how more cost-effective it is from a scheduling perspective. But yet, these homes will be a million plus. I mean, they're nothing to be snubbed.
I understand, but I'm, I'm trying to rein you in here because you're wandering off again on me.
I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. I'm just saying that if you would like to turn that entire grouping of properties that members of your family control, if we were looking at it in its entirety, you might be able to do some things to address some of the other concerns, whether it's single family home or a mixed use or whatever. So it, but it, it doesn't sound like you're in a position to, to go ahead and, and try to bring forth something in its entirety that the nearby residents and, and the council could consider and might allow you to pull that Thompson Street streetscape back to the original design. That's kind of where I was going with it. If you own the property on the other end, you could just move the lots back and, and you wouldn't have to change the streetscape there, allowing that community space at the front of Thompson Street instead of having to break it up.
Yeah, can I ask a question? What is the setbacks from Thompson Street to Vozy's homes on the long Thompson Street? Y'all know what that answer is? Yeah, it was before, yeah. Downtown. So... And the only reason I say that, I think we're very comparable to how that looks. Is that not true? Maybe I'm missing something.
I don't know, but the challenge is we zoned it with 30 feet.
I know.
And I think it goes down to 10.
I hear you. That's right.
Yeah, Vozy was approved as part of the city center development. 25 acre city center development has different zoning, mixed-use zoning in that you establish your development standards as part of that zoning. So that's why Vozy's a little different than its primary.
Mm-hmm.
Right. Okay. Those were the only questions I had.
Yeah, thank you. Good ones.
Councilman Bennett?
Just wanted to follow up on Councilmember Richard's question about working with the Phase One group. How much time estimated do you think you would need to...
So we close on that last unit on Friday and we've offered...
Maybe the next one.
Maybe the next one, actually.
The closings, in the next two weeks.
Yeah, we're trying to get the stove and, man, it's just like materials are, you know, we've ordered the stove, but they're shut down in Wisconsin and not building. Anybody that's in the home building business knows how hard that is. I would, I'm a little bit, you know, first of all, I'm, I'm willing to answer every question that I can, but I'm a little bit in the middle of a pickle, to so to speak. As soon as we get this home closed, we've offered to escrow the funds. I think one of the homeowners, who's the HOA president, is already engaged and hired contractors to do some of the stuff. Thank goodness, he's a, he's in our industry and he's been extremely helpful and he's going to continue to be so it appears. And in light of the fact that we're under contract with that last unit, I felt like from a scheduling perspective, it was fine with me for him to go ahead and contract with some people to do some of the items that are on those punch lists. It's always complicated, you know, and...
Let me, I believe, and I, I could be, I'm going to be the first one, I could be wrong, but I believe she was asking about how the current HOA would work with the Phase Two HOA. Is that, okay, good. So how far away are y'all from going through the protocols between the two attorneys to...
You know, I can't answer that completely.
Because I, I'm similar with your feeling of being in a pickle, because I feel like I'm in one too. So I looked, I'm looking at our current residents, but also I, I believe these are your current stakeholders and probably had an opportunity to be your biggest buy-in to move on to Phase Two and then what the mayor was saying there.
Mm-hmm.
I have a real concern, because I don't, I don't know, and we, we can only answer so much here and then y'all walk away and then we, we kind of lose control and just let the free market work its will. But when you said you were going to make it right, you looked at us and you looked at your partner, but you didn't look back at the audience. And so I, 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 I want to make sure, maybe if we can give you the opportunity to, to work it out with the protocol, I mean, I'm not an attorney, but you said there's protocols between two attorneys and get that done. And so at least we can get to agreement there. So that's the pickle I'm in.
I hear you.
Any other questions from council at the time? Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Cobb? Do we have any public comment cards on this island?
Yes, sir. I have about eight public comment cards.
Okay.
Mike Bennett, 81 Thompson Street, 301, Alpharetta, Georgia.
I'll repeat, I'm Michael Bennett and 81 Thompson Street, Unit 301. And hopefully some of this stuff is going to kind of correct itself as we, Jack and Hart have alluded to. I think as homeowners here, I'm going to bring up one thing that's, actually, I'll just read it straight away. For me and a lot of my friends here that have chosen to buy homes over here, an outdoor kitchen was really one of the big things we were looking forward to. I mean, right now, we have a fire pit out there with no gas running to it. There's no grill, there's nothing like that, there's no furniture. And so kind of, you know, when you're living in a condo like this, you're basically looking at, you know, either a George Foreman grill or I have to go pay Jim Bearden $15 property every time I use his grill. So that's one of the things that we're really just trying to close the loop on. And I know, Jack, you've talked about it with the people, so that's really, you know, these are examples of the kind of things that we want, you know, to execute on that you guys promised. And that's, you know, really what I want to say. I mean, I mean, it's in, it's in the documentation, outdoor living area with fire pit, barbecue grill and outdoor furniture. And that's, none of that's happened. It's been nine months. So just want to throw that out there.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Cobb?
Kay Rosenthal, 81 Thompson Street, 301, 302, Alpharetta, Georgia. My name is Kay Rosenthal. And as a homeowner and with my other homeowners here, we would just like, we got our punch list done. Some, one of us lived there for two years. I've been there almost a year. Nothing's been done to fix our problems. That should be under warranty.
Thank you, ma'am. And just to clarify, ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate the position you're in, but as council members, laws dictate what we make zoning decisions based on. And so your punch list isn't something we can really, as a city...
I understand.
I understand. I, I just wanted to help y'all, because if, if, if all of you just want to come forward and say that, that's fine. We can spend that time. But what we have to decide is land use right now. And so if you have other points that you would want to bring forward, I would encourage you to bring those forward as well.
I don't. Some, they do. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Ms. Cobb?
Tom Williams, 71 Thompson Street, Number 202, Alpharetta.
Hello, my name is Tom Williams. I live at 71 Thompson Street, Unit 202, in Cairo's Phase One. I'm the past president, actually the first president of the HOA. I'm no longer, I'm board member on the HOA, but I was the first. I came here tonight to comment about stormwater runoff in Phase Two. As you've heard already, there is an underground stormwater detention facility that's complete. It's installed, it's underneath the driveway, that'll be shared between the two phases. That facility was sized to receive the runoff from both Phases One and Two as they were originally designed. Maintenance of the facility is expected to be the joint responsibility between the two HOAs. When the project was originally designed with two identical, with Phase One and Phase Two identical, the expectation was that the HOA would be expanded. And that made sense because those buildings were the same. They have the same elevator maintenance, the same landscape maintenance. You know, it would be easy to combine HOAs. Now we have two phases that are completely different. The cost of an HOA for these single-family homes will be nothing like the cost of the HOA or the condominium buildings. But somehow we'll have to find a way to, to share maintenance on that underground facility. Since the redesign of Phase Two, there's a concern about the capacity of this detention And that is that the revised Phase Two design might increase the runoff as compared to the original design. It would then still have to be handled by this facility. And we don't know if it's going to be able to handle that flow. The open space exhibit in the materials tonight actually shows a 19% decrease in open space on the Phase Two portion from the original Phase Two to the current Phase Two. The table that we were looking at earlier on that open space, or I'm sorry, the table that's in the staff report actually shows no increase in impervious area. And in fact, I think it's even shows a slight decrease in impervious, impervious area on Phase Two. And I, just looking at the drawing, it, it doesn't look like there's, you know, it looks like there's more impervious area in the new Phase Two. The only thing I can figure is it's perhaps, it could be a result of the driveway, the shared driveway and all of the unit driveways are labeled as pervious papers and pervious concrete. And I guess they don't include any of that in the calculation for impervious surface. But I'd like to note that, that, those pervious materials only remain pervious with regular maintenance. And so there's a possibility that all of that paving could become impervious in the future if that HOA doesn't maintain it properly. The other thing I'd like to point out is that this drawing, which is the cyclone from Cairo's application, shows proposed stone patios from the side of each unit with stepping stone walkways to driveway. Those are not shown on the open space area. So I guess it's possible they weren't included in the impervious calculation. Those units are going to have side doors, so unless the people that live there are going to step out of their sliding doors onto grass, I guess there's going to be a stone, some kind of a hard surface there for their patios. The last thing I wanted to point out was that to fit all of these 10 units on the site, they've kind of moved them back. And this red line here is an extension of the existing retaining wall that's on the site now and a natural ridge line on the site. And so to fit all those units in, they've cut back into the ridge. So the area that's highlighted in yellow formerly would have drained to 0. So, the area that's highlighted in yellow formerly would have drained to Old Milton. Now, it's going to drain into the Phase Two site. And I think that also, it's not impervious, but it does increase the area that would receive stormwater runoff. So, what I'm asking is that a condition be added to, that a study be done to assess the stormwater runoff from Phase Two, to make sure that this facility is adequate to handle that runoff.
Thanks, sir.
I don't know if my three minutes are up.
They're way passed over, but I'll give you a little while. You said that was your last point, so I was taking you at your word.
Sorry. So, I was happy to hear the reassurances that we're going to be taken care of, but I'd just like to point out that I've heard that reassurance for, as president of the HOA, with some of the, you know, our site issues that we were facing for eight months, and for my unit personally, and I believed it up until the first of February, when Kairos stopped communicating with me at all. I hope this time I can believe it, but it's, track record tells me not to. The HOA president is paying for those services that we heard about earlier, including roof leaks that are affecting three of the units every time it rains. He's paying for that out of his pocket, because we can't get Kairos to do it, and hoping that he'll be reimbursed by them. Just wanted to note that. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Cobb?
Michelle Williams, 71 Thompson Street, Number 202, Alpharetta.
He's going to do the pictures for me, because I can't do both. Hi, my name's Michelle Williams, and I live in Building 71 of Thompson Street Flats. I would like to speak about the trees on the properties of both Phase One and Two. The first picture that I brought is the original plan that Kairos submitted for both phases, which included a row of trees along each side of the shared driveway, and provided a softening and screening of the buildings on either side. The trees have been installed along our building in Phase One, which softens the view of the residents in Phase Two. However, as you can see in the new plan... Can you switch the picture? Thanks. Not only have the screening trees been removed on the Phase Two side of the driveway, they are building a concrete wall along the driveway. However, on the west side of Phase Two, they plan on planting nine trees, providing a screen on that end. Therefore, they should do the same on the east for two reasons. Not only are the two phases considered two different communities, and should be separated by a type of barrier, but there should be some sort of visual screen to soften the impact of their buildings from our view, just as we expected when we purchased. Otherwise, the appearance from our side will be somewhat monolithic, with only concrete walls and the building siding. Also, I want to emphasize, as noted in Exhibit A, that we counted at least 27 trees that still have not been installed for Phase One, as shown in the picture. I'm concerned that because these trees may not be planted until the middle of this summer in an un-irrigated area, that the trees may not thrive as they should. So, what's the plan to water them until they are established? In addition, as noted in Exhibit A, some trees should have been removed, but were not. And we're particularly concerned about two very large pine trees that are threatening to fall in our building right now. These should be a priority. I'm scared to death every time we have a storm. They are literally on the edge of the ridge about to fall over. And lastly, I want to comment on the newly installed trees in Phase One. When our residents took control of the HOA last fall, we terminated Kairos' landscaper, the one that incorrectly installed our trees, and we hired our own landscaper. While walking the grounds of Phase One with the new landscaper, he noted that most of our trees were incorrectly planted and will probably not survive. This has been a big concern for our HOA since we have been left insolvent by Kairos, even spending every last dollar of our reserves. I hope Kairos will take care of this, these trees, before the beginning of the next phase. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cobb?
Jim Bearden, 81 Thompson Street, Number 101, Alpharetta.
My name is Jim Bearden, and I'm in Unit 101, 81 Thompson Street. Can I sit over here, if I got a couple of things I want to show?
Sure.
My discussion concerns the Item Six on this exhibit, which is the walking trail amended area, including everything that was supposed to be done under the original cyclone. And it also included the demo sheds, the demo bed trees, installing walkways, seating areas, and the construction of a walkway and stairs to give us access to this amenity area. And just on a side note, I don't think anybody in my whole area had any idea that we were going to lose 15,000 feet of the amenity area until it was brought up tonight. This next slide is the original area that shows where the walkway was going to be installed. And it's right here behind our garage. It comes right up to here, doesn't affect having removed any retaining walls or anything. And it gives us access, and also would give access to the Phase Two people to be able to get up into that area also. And we just, I just got something the other day that shows, and here's, here's the original that I just had there, when it would come up, I'm not a very good engineer. This is now, we understand, the proposed steps and area. Well, we really have a problem with that, because this area here requires no demo of retaining wall. It allows access now to buildings 71 and 81, and easy access to the tenement of Phase Two. To use this one, in my opinion, and I'm not an engineer, but I believe it would require a Phase Two construction permit, and it would require demo and grading work, because this entire retaining wall is going to have to be taken back. It's going to create unnecessary delays for us to be able to use the amenity area, which the council has indicated that that has to be completed before you give a construction permit for the Phase Two. So, and also, this one, in my opinion, is going to affect somewhat the privacy of the person who buys this unit in, because it's going to be right outside that person's block in their house. I was attended through the Zoom call, the planning commission meeting in March the 10th, where Mr. Rantry indicated this Item Six would be commenced in 60 days. Well, today, nothing has been done. And what we're asking is that the entire area and access be completed in accordance with the original site plan, that we be compensated in some way for the loss of 15,000 square feet we have just lost in a community amenity area, and all of this be completed before Phase Two construction permit is granted. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Cobb?
Scott Jank, 71 Thompson Street, Number 201, Alpharetta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. My name is Scott Janki, I am a resident of the Thompson Street Flats, Unit 201. I'm here to emphasize some of the key points that came out in the CCMIM meeting that happened on March 10th, that we want to make sure we get into the record here. It was a consensus that was reached during that Q and A session, I believe. First one has to do with the stormwater runoff. Stormwater runoff during construction of Phase Two will not go into the shared underground detention facilities. In other words, since we have the responsibility to maintain that facility, we don't want construction runoff to go into that. And a temporary detention pond will be constructed near the northwest corner of Phase Two site to collect stormwater during construction. The second item is construction vehicle traffic. The shared driveway will not be used for construction. Vehicle access to the construction site will be at the northwest corner of the site. Item Three, HOA structure. The HOA for Phase Two homes will be separate from the Thompson Street Flats HOA, and the two will not be combined. Item Four, noise. Kairos will comply with the city's rules concerning noise from construction, Section 26-116, Restricted Uses and Activities. Those were the main notes that we wanted to emphasize for this meeting before Phase Two commences. And I want to make a couple of points here, we'll have a few more seconds left, in that it's hard to imagine Phase Two going forward until Phase One is complete. There's an awful lot left to be done, and it's been neglected for quite some time. And we feel like we've been abandoned for several months, as Tom has indicated. And to your point, Mr. Burnett and city attorney, and Mr. Mayor, with regards to punch lists, I understand that point you're making. But there aren't just a few disgruntled homeowners here today, this is all of us. And the fact that we have the same argument with regards to unfinished punch lists should make an impact on all of you to some degree, I would hope. We've been neglected for quite some time. So, that's all I have, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Cobb?
Sandra Teagan, 71 Thompson Street, Number 102, Alpharetta.
Thank you for this opportunity to listen to us and to let us speak in front of the council. Almost all of us have punch lists with Kairos. I realize that it's not City Council's problem to have him complete our punch list. But we would be much more liable to work with him as far as approving him and trusting him on his next project. So, I'm putting this before you, and he's here in the audience also, that it would be wise if he would listen to us, take care of our needs, because otherwise, we would have no other, no recourse, you know, nothing, no wedge if he was already involved in the other project. And once that was finished, he'd be gone. So, I think it would be, he would be, he'd be doing himself a favor if he would listen to us and get our punch list done first, before he starts something else. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Cobb?
This is the last public comment card I have. Joe Long, 81 Thompson Street, Number 201, Alpharetta.
Hi, my name is Joe Long, I'm the current HOA president at Thompson Street Flats, living in Unit 201, Building 81. These are great questions, great points you guys brought up, thank you for that. I'm speaking strictly in behalf of the HOA. You've heard the residents voice their complaints. We got two moving parts here. First is back at HOA fees, which is about 33 grand that Kairos owes. And then we have the unfinished HOA punch items that are not individual units. This is water intrusion issues. And the grand scheme of things, it's not that big a punch list, maybe 48 items. And I've offered to self-perform those punch items for these guys. I'll do it, I'll handle it, but I need the money. And it just seems like the can keeps getting kicked down the road. You know, I know they got to close that last unit. It's probably not going to close Friday, you know, but see, that unit could have been ready for sale months ago. It's just been sitting there. So, there hasn't been much of a sense of urgency, but I do think their intentions are good. I do think Art and Jack mean well, and I think they will do what they say they're going to do. But, you know, sometimes projects get sideways and you get upside down, but you still have an obligation to your client to get it done. You know, I've had projects where I was in the red, Art gets your line of credit, which you got to do to get it done, you know, and that's where my frustration comes in at. So, that's kind of where I'm at with it. Thank you for taking the time.
Thank you, sir. That's all the public comment cards, but if there is anyone else that would like to... I see someone raising their hand, so...
Husband and wife team?
Yeah. Hi, I'm Inouelle, and this is Ron Bogdanovich. We live in the direct area around Thompson Street Flats. We are very excited to see that there's a possibility of it being single-family homes. I think the condos took a very long time to sell, because a lot of people, like my husband and I, did not want to live in a condo, didn't want to have to deal with elevators, and wanted to own a home, you know, going from a larger house, downsizing to a smaller house. I think going from that to a smaller house instead of directly to a condo fit us better, as well as all the people in our neighborhood. There's 22 homes in our neighborhood, it sold out within the first week that they went on the market. Boom, they were gone. I would love to see that happen with this development too, instead of something sitting around and hurting the property values of the current condos that are there. Doing the same exact condo development right next door, when it already took them three years to sell those, I think would be a detriment for our area. And I like the look of the houses that they're putting in. I think it's very beautiful for the area, and I know that you have some comment.
Yeah, I think if you just let the marketplace vote, the vote is single-family homes. They sell the condos, they drag on. I mean, the other thing is just being a business owner, I mean, people put their entire lives and finances in a project like this, and to string it out for three years, cash flow is a huge issue, I know, in our business. And I just feel for the owners for that. And if they could put a better product out there that sells quicker and keeps this community a home neighborhood instead of an apartment complex neighborhood. I mean, we've lived all over the country, we've lived in Los Angeles, where everything's gone apartments, and it just takes away the look and the feel in the family home. So, not knowing all the issues, and there's always issues with punch lists, I just think it helps build a community of single-family homes. And plus, it gives them cash flow to move on with the project and help with the punch list. So, that's just not knowing the detailed issues from a neighborhood next door. We're excited about the single-family homes, and we just wanted to come down and give a supportive other view.
Yeah, and represent our neighborhood, because I spoke with a lot of people in our neighborhood. I have direct contact with a lot of them, we're all excited about the houses going up instead of the condos.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The question was what neighborhood?
We're in Rose.
Rose.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you.
Sure, feel free.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. And I don't know who to face, but I think I should face all of them.
It's probably best you address the council.
Right, sorry. I will address the council about these homeowners. I've never been to a city council zoning meeting before, because it's always been something Art has done for his business. But it feels like it's gotten kind of personal, because I know that the residents have a lot of anger, and I just want them to know that we hear that anger, and we feel it, and I feel it. And I also want to say, so I want to acknowledge it, and I also want to say that we are sorry for the things that haven't been done. Art cares, I have seen him work just his whole life. He cares, he does not walk away from projects, he does them with excellence, he cares. And I know they may not believe that, but I do, because I know my husband, and I know that he cares, and I know that he will finish the job as soon as he is able, in an excellent manner. And things have been delayed, I would just ask for some grace. It has been a wild time, the project has taken longer than we thought, we had record rainfall, all those things cost money. And speaking of gravel, you know, the gravel with the rain, and just, I know these details, because I'm his wife. And so, I saw what he went through, and I know that he's going to finish the job in an excellent manner. And so, I would just ask for grace, and I want you to let you know that we care, and I even pray for these homeowners by name when I... pray for these homeowners by name when I drive by their building. And I pray that God would bless them and keep them and make His face shine upon them, be gracious to them and give them peace and joy in their home, and I wanted them to know that. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's anyone else that would like to come forward and speak on this item, now's your opportunity to do so. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Do I have any motion from council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to offer a motion to table PH-21-06, Kairos Thompson Street, change to conditions of zoning. I believe council has heard enough concern tonight in regards to the existing site plan.
You're pre-arguing your motion.
I will second that.
In a motion to table, there can be no discussion, so...
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Richard, a second by Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell. As I said before, with a motion to table, there can be no discussion. All those in favor of the motion to table, please vote yes. Otherwise, vote no. The item is tabled. So that'll mean council can take this matter up at a future time. So that'll end the discussion tonight for item PH-21-06, Kairos Thompson Street Flats, change to conditions of zoning. So we'll move on to the new business item for this evening. New business item for this evening is the roof replacement at Fire Station 83. Director Robinson left us.
Before the meeting, we decided, I guess I was going to take this one.
Oh, there he is. Okay. Somebody was standing. I thought he had cut out on us.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, time for you is the roof replacement at Fire Station 83. More specific, it is the metal roof from Fire Station 83. This is a little unique compared to other bids. This is through Garland, who is a vendor through U.S. Communities. They go out and they solicit three qualified firms to provide us bids. All the three firms submitted bids ranging in price from $210,000 to $237,000, with the low bid being from Innovation Roofing Group at $210,734,000. This, the fees and the price and all that stuff will go through Garland. We will have people over there watching the unit prices and make sure things are being done accordingly, and this will be a 90-day contract once the notice receipt is offered.
Thank you, Pete. Any questions from council? Ms. Cobb, do we have any public comment cards on this item?
We do not, sir.
But if anyone wants to come speak on the roof replacement at Fire Station 83, now's your chance. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we award a contract for the replacement of the roof at Fire Station 83, the metal roof segment to Garland DDS Incorporated under the Competitive Procure Partners Contract Number PW1925 in an amount not to exceed $210,734 and authorize the mayor to execute all necessary documents.
Second the...
I should have said dollars only once.
Second the motion for $210,734.
Thank you.
So we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell, a second. We'll say it was by Councilman Hypes and that motion was for approval of the authorization to acquire the services of Garland DDS with contract PW1925 in amount not to exceed $210,734. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Otherwise, vote accordingly. And it does pass unanimously.
Mayor and Council.
Great job, Pete. Congratulations, Director Robinson. So that'll wrap up the new business portion of tonight's meeting and we'll move on to public comment. So if there's any members of the public that would like to come forward and voice your concerns, now's your opportunity to do that. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Reports, Mr. Drinkard, I understand you're going to provide us with a COVID-19 update.
Yes, sir. As of the Friday report from Fulton County Public Health, Alpharetta's incidence rate is now at 109.8 per 100,000. We did see, as anticipated, a slight uptick following spring break. That was something that public health officials had anticipated. Fortunately, it does not appear to have been as significant a spike here as it was in some other areas. So based on what we're seeing right now, we're anticipating that, you know, in fairly short order, we should reach that threshold of 100 per 100,000. Based on that, we have set a target date of June 1st to enter our Phase 5 segment of our operational restoration plan. That would return basically all operations more or less to normal. We'll continue social distancing in indoor areas, encourage people to wear masks, et cetera, until CDC guidelines, public health guidelines change. One of the biggest things it will do is allow us to begin phasing in some of our public events. Those would obviously begin with outdoor events. First ones you'd likely see would be the concerts in the park back here, some form of Fourth of July celebration, probably not quite what it would typically be. Morgan and, excuse me, Director Rogers and his team are working through all of the details right now, so you'll be seeing information on that in the near future as those plans are finalized. But we are on track. The light on the end of, at the end of the tunnel is nearing and it doesn't appear to be a train, so we're pretty excited and looking forward to it. But the June 1st date would still be commensurate on, you know, being at that 100 per 100,000 target that we have held and we would continue to work in that direction. But we feel confident at this point that by June 1st, we should be there.
Thanks, sir. Any questions from council and this report? Councilman Hypes?
At the appropriate time, I would love to hear from Director Rogers, be it today or some future meeting, about plans for Food Truck Alley and some of those others in terms of dates and what's planned. I understand that plans don't always come to fruition, but if anything that's subject to public disclosure at some appropriate time, would love to hear you come forward with that.
Thanks, sir. I'll make sure that we get some update for the public and for council when we give Director Rogers an opportunity to put all that together for us. Any other reports? Councilwoman Richard?
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to remind everyone in the public that's watching that we have our second public workshop for our 2040 comp plan update. It will be held tomorrow evening from 6:00 to 7:30 at 3625 Brookside Parkway. It's an outdoor event. We're using the outdoor amenity space at the office park and would like to encourage our residents to join us and share their ideas for the future of the city. The weather is going to be perfect. We're going to have food trucks there so we can eat and plan the future at the same time. So encourage everyone to attend. Brookside Parkway, 3625.
That's your first event, sir.
Over there near Loyal Q. And for those of you that have not visited Brookside Park, it is a hidden gem, about a 20-acre park, probably more than that, along the Big Creek that most people don't even know the city has as a park space.
I actually asked the question to reemphasize, it's not Brook Street Park.
Oh, thank you. Yes, I did say.
Oh, you absolutely did, but I was looking just to sort of have it emphasized that we are familiar with having events at Brook Street Park. This is Brookside Park, so...
Thank you, yeah.
Off of Old Milton Parkway.
Off of Old Milton. And my other update, just want to congratulate our community development staff with their most recent award. I think most of you have seen that ARC has granted the city a $160,000 grant award for planning study for the South Main area, South Main, south of Old Milton Parkway to our, to the city limits. So that's a significant opportunity for us and I want to thank Kathy and her staff for being so proactive and finding partners to help us further our goals. I know that it's not an easy task to complete all those grant applications and get all the paperwork in, but your track record so far is amazing with what we've been awarded so far, so I appreciate that. Thank you. And that's it for me.
Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell?
Thank you. I just want to remind everybody, if you still need Girl's Felt Cookies, Jason Binder loves the whole procurement process and distribution, so be sure and call him with all your needs there. Thank you.
Any other reports? Sadly, I must ask that we have a motion to adjourn from this meeting into an executive session.
I will gladly move to end this meeting and move that we go to executive session.
We have a motion. Motion by Councilman Binder, a second by Councilman Hypes. All those in favor of adjourning into executive session, please vote yes. Otherwise, vote no. Councilman Binder, would you like to vote for your motion? There we go, and it passes unanimously. Thanks, everybody.